Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started tonight, Chief has a special presentation for us. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's an honor to be here this evening, and we have a new officer that you sworn in this morning, and she took her oath this morning, so I want to introduce her officially to everyone. This is Officer Megan Clye. She's a 2018 graduate of Ross High School in Hamilton, Ohio. She has an associate's degree in natural resources for law enforcement from Hocking College, and she recently completed the Police Academy in 2021. Her first couple of years in law enforcement was at the University of Dayton and as a public safety officer for the Metro Parks of Butler County. And one of the things that she mentioned, and I mentioned this this morning during her hiring ceremony, is a comment that she made, that she is aware that what has attracted her to our community is that our, is the connection the officers have with the community. We're just not officers, we're members. That's one of the things that Megan mentioned to us during our hiring process. So, we welcome her to the Police Department. She has a few weeks of training to go before she hits the streets on her own, but we did welcome her and her family this morning to the Police Department, and I just want to introduce to you Officer Megan Clye.
All right. Welcome. It's all yours.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for all the support and providing me with this opportunity to work for the city of Beaver Creek. You know, I have a lot of goals to accomplish here, but I'm ready to become a professional representative of the Beaver Creek Police Department, so, thank you.
Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much. All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. Now, turn it over to Councilmember Schwartz for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll all remain standing for a moment. As we're all aware, today is 9/11, and I have pondered a lot on the words that I wanted to say this morning, or this evening. The ceremony this morning was incredibly touching, and I have a dear friend who is a retired Air Force member, and he had wrote something that really spoke to me, and it was his way of putting things into words that I couldn't, and so instead, I'm going to share his words. Today marks the 22nd anniversary of the most devastating attack on U.S. soil since Pearl Harbor, a cowardly attack that changed the lives of 285 million Americans forever. Twenty-two years ago, at 8:56, there was no racial, gender, or political divide. There was only one nation, standing together in support of each other. We need not forget the feelings we felt that morning and the days following, the unity of faith we bestowed as a nation. We do not forget the lives lost in Shanksville, the Pentagon Towers 1 and 2, and those responders who selflessly ran into the faces of hell with one thing in mind, to save their fellow Americans. Two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven Americans woke for the last time on the morning of September 11, 2001. Remember them today, as you start your day. Pray for those families and our nation. Hug your loved ones. Never pass up an opportunity to say I love you. And lastly, just simply be kind. May we never forget. Thank you.
All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Motion and second to approve the agenda is submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's a couple sets of minutes. The first set is August 21st, which is the joint work session with Beaver Creek Township. Any comments? Motion?
Move we approve the work session minutes, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August 21st work session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved. Next is August 28th, the regular session meeting. Any input?
Move to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes for August 28th is submitted. All in favor, say aye. Or, excuse me, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, ordinance is resolutions and PUDs. First is ordinance 23-19.
Ordinance 23-19, and ordinance amending Chapter 158 by making certain additions, deletions, and changes to various sections of the zoning code in accordance with Chapter 158.175.
Thank you. This is the second reading. It was sponsored by Councilmember Curran. Any further discussion? Anything new from staff?
Just have one comment, Mayor.
Please.
And it's just a thank you to Mr. Burkett. I forgot to do this at the last session, but I want to thank you for trying to tackle the zoning and fencing issues for double frontage yards. That's been an issue on the Board of Zoning Appeals for many years. I remember that was a real challenge when I served there, so I want to thank you for really moving that forward, because I had often assumed, long assumed, it would take a long time to put that together well, and so I want to thank you for that, because I think that can help a lot of homeowners. Thank you.
Do you have a motion, sir?
Move to approve 23-19, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-21.
Ordinance 23-21, to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023, and to amend ordinances 23-18, 23-11, 23-06, and 22-32.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. This is just, again, some supplemental appropriations and certifying some revenue. We don't normally budget for any accidents or natural disasters, so when they hit, basically everything has to be accounted for and certified and appropriated. The first one was in February. We had a vehicle, a police vehicle, that was hit during a traffic stop. Again, we submit that to our insurance company, they go ahead and subrogate that, and so we just received the proceeds from that vehicle, from the insurance company, which we have to certify. And then, in August of 2023, we had another accident with one of the police vehicles. Both vehicles were totaled. Both were 2019. One was 191, 192. I don't know what was going on with that, but must have had some sort of magnet attached to it. But, so the bottom line is that we received from the insurance company $22,187 for each one of those vehicles, so we have to certify that revenue coming in. At the same time, Lebanon Ford called, who's our vendor, and we buy most of our, from state bid, buy our vehicles from, and they happen to have two on the lot that another city had canceled and called us and asked us if we wanted them. And we elected to go ahead and do that. They gave it to us at a discount. The other thing is, is that they were on the lot, they're available, I think they're already over here, and the bottom line was, is that had we gone through the normal ordering process to replace those two vehicles, it would have taken about 18 months to get them in here. So, kind of lucky that that all happened, not lucky that we had an accident, but lucky that the cars were available for us. The only caveat to that was they weren't the hybrids that we've been picking up, so, but again, we thought it was important to get the fleet back up to its running operating level. And so to purchase those two vehicles, we need to appropriate $85,706 for that. So, again, and since obviously the appropriations were over, the certification of the revenue, it will dig into the fund balance a little bit, but there's been no fear for the police for dropping below the 20%, so the fund balance will be able to eat that difference. So, that's the police side of it. And then we had a natural disaster on April 1st at the golf course. A tree fell on one of our comfort stations, and again, filed that with our insurance company, and what they're doing now is, instead of paying the vendors directly, they're paying us, which requires us to pay the vendors then. And so the bottom line is, is that we had about $20,275 worth of damage to the comfort station, which was when we had removed the tree, the other one was, we had to replace the roof, and we received minus the deductible, the $17,775 from the insurance company. So, again, the amount coming in from the insurance company has to be certified, and the amount payable for the damage repair had to be appropriated. So, those are the two, three unusual things that happened in the last couple of months, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I do have one.
Please.
I happen to be following number 193 this morning, and just happened to look out that way, and so I was very careful to keep distance.
(Laughter)
So, but I just, it was interesting to read and then follow.
You assured a clear distance.
And again, remember, we bought four all at the same time, so keep in mind that that 193 and 194 are probably the ones that you got to keep an eye on out there.
Sure. I think I know the answer to this, but I would like to ask it anyway, because we got the exact same amount of money for both cars despite depreciation probably being more over from March to August.
They were the same years, but yeah, so that's what they go by in mileage. So that was the other factor, and they were both at, I think it was 130 or somewhere in that ballpark, so.
It's roughly what I thought, but I just figured I'd follow up with the insurance company, because it struck me as interesting, they have the exact same figure, so.
Well, and again, they have a calculation for all that stuff, so again, because they were same year and almost same mileage, I figured it would be about the same, so.
Thank you.
I have a question. I support both of these appropriations without question, but I question, or I'm curious about the timing of them. You already purchased the vehicles, they're already on site, I mean, what if we say no?
Well, that's the risk that I was willing to take to get those vehicles, because again, not only did we get them, and they're in the fleet, and we actually got a discount, on the discount of the state bid. I felt it appropriate to go ahead and risk the fact that you're right, you could decline it, and then we would just be out that money, the additional appropriations for that amount, so. But, again, it was one of those boom-boom things, and a lot of these additional appropriations and certifications sometimes always come in after the fact, so it's not that unusual. We try to get ahead of them, and if we know they're coming, to do them that way, but in this case, it was all like, it all happened within like, one week, two or three weeks ago, so.
Okay. Yeah, again, I have no problem with it, it's just perhaps some communication. Appreciate it.
That's a good point. Yeah, again, we were negotiating with those guys, again, up to the last minute, and they were like, they were trying to get them off the lot, and I couldn't pull the trigger at their last meeting, so it was like, well, now I have all the facts, so.
Thank you.
But, good point, yeah, that's, that is sort of in reverse.
What year is the, the new ones?
23.
23, so they're four years there.
Anyone else on council? Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move forward. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 23-21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-21. This is an appropriations ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Next is ordinance 23-22.
Ordinance 23-22, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council amending the general provisions section of Chapter 158 zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek by adopting a new section 158.005 Cephas and zoning code activities to address Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States Cephas regulations and to authorize the Planning and Development Director to require applicants for zoning permits to certify that they are not subject to Cephas review, and if an applicant is subject to Cephas review, to provide supplemental documentation from the United States evidencing the results of the Cephas review.
Thank you. This is the second reading, but Mr. McHugh has some input on this one, please.
First reading, Mayor.
That's first reading?
Yeah, yeah, first reading.
Mayor, sorry.
Yeah, Mayor, as the clerk has stated, this is for Committee on Foreign Investment, and it simply is that there is a Congress, and the President signed a few years ago an act that allows or requires foreign persons, which are corp, can be corporations, individuals, partnerships, LLCs, but to register under certain circumstances where they're engaged in certain activities, and the idea being national security with respect to certain businesses not wanting to be located right next to a military base. That, and the point of this is to simply ask and require applicants on the application to certify that they are not subject to Cephas. It is really the city's effort to, one, determine if someone is, and two, to make a good faith effort to not be a party to a transaction that really, or authorized permitting, that really is something that we shouldn't be authorizing. I did reach out to the Wright Patterson, through the legislative liaison, and just this morning, I got the official statement and/or comment from Wright Pat, and I'll just read it to everyone if I can. "We are grateful for the support of the city of Beaver Creek and its interest in protecting the security of Wright Patterson Air Force Base. We expect all developers to comply with all, with any applicable federal regulations and appreciate the city's efforts to ensure they do so." And that's signed Wright Patterson Air Force Base. So, they are, and I think we may be one of the first in the nation to actually do this, is what I understand, so the base is, I was, you know, I just want to make sure, and I know council wants to make sure, that the base did not have an objection to this, and the base appears to appreciate the city's efforts, or the city council's effort in this, so. Answer any additional questions, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. Anything from any other staff? Okay. This is the first reading of an ordinance. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Please. Give us your name and address, please, and I think you've been there before, we like about three minutes.
Yes, sir. Robert Trout, and I live at 2187 Bassett Court. And my issue that I have is, there's an acronym on it, it's not spelled out, and that puts me at a strong disadvantage, not knowing what it stands for. I did deduct what it was during the discussion and everything else, but I honestly feel that it's, an acronym should be spelled out, at least on the first, first reading. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I have a comment. In the, in the agenda packet, the ordinance, it's spelled out in the title.
Well, for public input, can somebody just read that?
Yeah, so just for awareness, Cephas stands for the Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States, but Councilmember Bales had a comment as well.
Well, no, I could, I was going to clarify that, but I would also like to say that I love this ordinance. I think it protects our community, it protects Wright Patterson Air Force Base, and I appreciate Vice Mayor Garcia bringing it to our attention after her trip to Washington. So, that's my comment, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I also want to just thank, there was a lot of work that went into this between our city manager and our city attorney, and some conversations back and forth with some liaisons in DC who were talking about this, so this, this was a long, it's very well-written, and it's very well-put-together, but it took a long time to get there, so thank you to everyone for doing that. I think it will be a very huge benefit to the community.
Anyone else?
Yes, but go ahead, Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you. I just wanted to also thank Vice Mayor Garcia, I think this is a very proactive effort, and I think it really shows the benefit of having council members and the mayor and vice mayor attending the Dayton Development Coalition in DC, that's not the event, the fly-in in DC. And so I think that this shows a tangible benefit from that, and I do also want to thank the attorney and manager for their time and effort in putting into this. The one concern I had was the base, and they're very welcoming to it, so I appreciate it.
In the nick of time.
In the nick of time, in true fashion.
Yeah, I too would like to thank the vice mayor. This is really excellent work, bringing it to our attention. Mayor, thank you for bringing it forward, and city attorney, you've been working on it for some time as well, so appreciate your work and your openness to feedback. I know we had some points of discussion on that, but this really is novel legislation, being one of the first at the local level to put this in place. There is an adversary that's buying land in our country, and we do need to be aware of it, especially in our given location, next to Wright Patterson Air Force Base. Warfare looks very different today. It's across five different domains, from land, sea, air, but also space and cyberspace, which makes it very different from in years past, and so this, I think, is legislation that other municipalities can follow. It's a way of strengthening the inside of the homeland, and I think it's really very, very good, and it has my full support, so thank you.
Anyone else?
One of the questions that I had has been answered, but as far as the Air Force goes, coming that they're in favor of that, I'm just a little concerned about logistics, I'm not sure how it's going to work. You know. Time's up, oh darn. But I mean, if someone comes in and you ask them if they're, would be covered under that, and if they don't tell you the truth, then what do we do? And then if they do tell you the truth, who investigates it? Do you send it on to the government, or how is that handled?
Yeah, really, it's going to be a box on the, on the application, and they're going to certify that they are not subject to it, and again, if they are subject to it, then they're going to have to provide documentation before we release the permit. From a investigative standpoint, if there's an issue, we always have the Police Department and FBI to ask questions or get clarification for if we think there's something amiss, or it just doesn't add up or something. I mean, it's going to be one of those things where we'll kind of know it as we see it, or think we know it as we see it, and we'll respond in accordingly.
I think it's a great idea, I just wanted to make sure that we've got some way to move forward if.
Yeah, the ordinance actually also provides that upon notification that there's an applicant that is, we believe is not complying, that the, that Mr. Burkett would then inform council that through the manager, then council can determine and instruct us to contact the base. And we effectively have a period, waiting period of 60 days, to give the base an opportunity to weigh in and give us some direction, so we can.
As I said, I think that's a great thing, and I think being the first in the nation is something a little further than our hat, so thank you, Vice Mayor Garcia, for bringing that back from Washington DC. That was, that was a huge thing, so that's all I had. Thank you.
You know, some, being proactive is the best part about it. I mean, it's, people are not going to tell you, really, I mean, it's, we are trying to, I think this will help raise a red flag, it might discourage somebody from coming close around in our area of the basin. I think it ought to be shared with the COG that is developing the zoning around the base, that maybe the neighboring communities can adopt something similar. So if we get regionally some power behind this to discourage investment in this area, I think we'd be a lot better off. But it's, you know, it's one of those things that protects the city, too. We are doing our due diligence to try to find issues like this, so it's good to have. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I move, I motion to move ordinance 23-22 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-22 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution 23-47.
Resolution 23-47, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Hello. Good evening again. This is our normal process of approving the tax rates and the millage and the revenue from the county auditor. Again, this is, to refresh your memory, this is our third phase of this process. You've already approved the first phase, which was the tax budget back in. Actually, that's, should be 23, 34, and I think it was 7, 10, 23, but anyway, that was the first phase. It's not in the future, which is nice to see. And the, we submitted the information to the county Budget Commission, they reviewed our request and indicated that we indeed do need the levies that we have projected to collect, and from 23, payable in '24. I wanted to show you this because this is getting to a lot of new headlines, the actual property values, because it's a reappraisal year, did shoot up $374 million, which is a 22% increase. The important thing here, as you could see, last time they reappraised it, it was eight. The other years during the course of the foreign non-reappraisals were all probably about 2% or 3%. And so again, it's the effect of the economy and the stimulation of the real estate market here in Beaver Creek, which is a good thing, but what happens then is everybody's worried about how that affects their taxes, and I wanted to clear this up. I had a couple of questions at the Popcorn Festival about this, and again, first, let me start out with the big picture. The city is only 19% of everybody's property tax liability. So again, you start with the 19%, and then you work your way down. You see here the projected revenue that we have for next year and for this year, and you can see only the inside millage for the general fund and the police pension will get the 22%. So again, what we're looking at is probably a half-million dollar increase in our property taxes, which will be reflected on the property taxes for the residents. All the voted levies, everything below the first two lines, the city will not see any, virtually any increase. I mean, we're talking less than a half percent for all of them. So the bottom line is that the total revenue that the city will get is about 2.5%. It's basically because of the inside millage and the police pension, but again, with all the voted levies, what happens is that we still get the same dollar amount, but the effective millage rate for the residents goes down. So again, they won't be seeing a 22% increase in all the voted millages that the city has out there on their property tax bill. So, when they look at it and say, wow, my tax bill went up a crazy amount, the bottom line is, is they have to remember, 19% of that bill is for the city, and about 92% of that, so only 8% of it is going to see that 22% increase, the rest is going to keep their property taxes the same amount. So, again, that's a simplified version, there's always, you know, the property values and everything else like that that comes into play, but I wanted to show this to everybody, because again, everybody thinks that the city tax is going to go up 22%, and I just wanted to show that some of it will, a small majority will, or a small percentage will, but the majority will stay the same. Again, with voted levies, once the city gets the amount that they're set for, when the property values go up, the effective millage goes down, thus evening it all out, so I wanted to explain that. It's hard to do even in layman's terms, but I wanted to just show you that. So, basically, these are preliminary numbers, again, set by the Budget Commission, these go up to the state, then they get reevaluated up there, and then they determine whether or not those values will be the same. And again, normally, they don't change along the process unless there's something going on. Again, as I discussed last time, the state is evaluating the process for the reappraisals, and they're still working out that formula to make sure that they've all got it squared away, and then all the county auditors are using the same formula, but for right now, that's the estimates we have, and that's what you're looking at right now, is approving those. now, is approving those estimates that our county auditor have provided to you through the Budget Commission by looking at our tax budget to determine what we will receive in 2024. So again, the next phase of this whole thing is the regular budget process, and the bottom line is that we'll be meeting with the directors to go over those and solidify the budgets and the justifications, and making sure that we stay within that 20% fund balance. And then again, what'll happen is is that we'll go through that process. We'll bring forward to you a budget, a recommended budget, and then you remember that you have two meetings that are open to the public in November to discuss all of the funds and byline item for each one of the budgets that we propose out there. So, and then the last and final part of that process is December, I think it's 11th. You'll be approving the appropriations and certifying the revenue to the county auditor for the 2024 budget, and that adopts it, and lets it begin on January 1st. So, be happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, it's hard to put that in layman's terms. I tried to do a couple of examples, but they never seemed to make it any simpler, so, but I thought it would be important for you to see that, and that was the easiest way I could come up with to show you that. But again, the key takeaway is 19% of the total tax bills of cities, and then of that, 92% of that is gonna be equal to whatever they paid in the past, so...
Well, I thought that chart you did, Bill, on the increases for the various funds was the best chart I've seen. I mean, that is something that the people, any, you know, the public can understand that one. If I can understand it, they can understand it. But that was, just stood out to me as being a very, very simple explanation. So the more we can get that out to the public, I think the better off we're gonna be, and maybe, maybe people will get an understanding of that. So with that, any comments, questions?
Just a comment I had was that I, too, at the Popcorn Festival fielded a handful of questions about the reappraisal and how it's going to affect them, and it is a constant education, you know, about inside millage versus voted millage.
Right.
I do love that chart a lot. And, you know, millage in general is a confusing topic.
Well, trying to explain the effect of millage and how that equals the same amount of revenue to the city is a difficult concept, because again, everybody's situation is completely different, and we were even kicking around the idea of having like a, you know, like a calculator, sometimes when we have the income tax, that type of thing, where you could plug in your individual information and see. But I haven't worked out the logistics of that yet, but again, just to help them. I mean, it's on, theoretically, it's on the county auditor's tax website. You know, if you go in and look at your own individual property, you'll see that, but it doesn't jump out at you like that. They just see the big dollar increase, so. And they don't, they don't know that, you know, it doesn't relate to the city, that it might be the schools in the Green County and the township, but again, I just, I was just, I think you're right, though. I think there could be a better way to get that out to them, and so that could be individualized, but...
Well, this is a good start. Thank you.
Yeah. Even our quarterly newsletter that goes out, or, you know, something, that's just, that just impressed me. Thank you very much.
I wanted to share my same sentiments. I think that was wonderful. I think you hit it spot on. Even as a council member, it's sometimes difficult to wrap your mind around, and so I appreciate that, and I think a calculator would be awesome if you could figure out the logistics of it.
Well, we did it in the Citizens Academy, and I tried to run it with, you know, like a $10, you know, and it just, it gets convoluted. So again, it's, you're right, you gotta just bring it down to the basic level.
Pete, you said you had something you needed to add.
Well, and Bill, you can help me. One thing, though, for that is, I wanna be very clear to everybody. It's on.
Is it on now? There you go. I can say it's been on.
One thing I wanted to clarify with and be very clear is that the 92% of the fixed levies that do not, that the city receives the same revenue for, okay? I wanna be very clear, that is not the same as could somebody's appraisal caused, caused them to pay more on a certain levy? Yes, it could. Could they actually, the appraisal, if it goes, there's, is below the average, cause their levy amount that they pay to be reduced? Yes, it could. At the end of the day, all the ups and downs of people's appraisals, the city receives the same dollar. That's the key. But I always say it's like 100 deck chairs on a, on the deck of a boat. You have 100. You start on 50 on one side and 50 on the other side, and after a reappraisal, you might have 60 on one side and 40 on the other side. There's still 100, but what people pay may have changed unless their house was about exactly the average of the city of Beaver Creek's average appraisal, then they probably will pay the same. If the average is 22% and their home is, appraisal was only 15% increase, they probably will pay less than the actual fixed levies. And a person then that's 29% or 30% higher, they will probably pay a little bit more in levies to offset, if the average is 22%, that's the baseline. So if you're above 22%, you'll probably pay a little bit more. If you're lower than 22%, you'll probably pay less. But the whole thing is, we still have 100 deck chairs on the deck. We get no more. That's the key. I never wanna say that you will not pay more or less with a reappraisal, even on the fixed levies. It's just that the city receives the exact same. So I don't wanna ever be accused of saying your amount, you might get home and then do the, do the math and actually look at it and say, I am paying more, because my property went up 35% and the average is 22%. So you, it's possible that you could pay more on a fixed levy. Somebody could pay less on a fixed levy if they're percent, it's all appraisal based. Just know that the city does not receive any additional. So just wanna be very clear on that. I do need a motion. We found, Mr. Cussera found a missing number on the spreadsheet from the auditor. He had to call the auditor and say, I think you missed something today. Not to throw David under the bus, but luckily, we found, we found the number. So back in the back, we put some copies, and you each have a copy in your hand. Ms. Cussera, if you wanna tell them or tell me more about what was missing?
Well, you just have to replace the one that's on your desk for, that's Exhibit A in the resolution, so you have to, you know, make the motion to...
Replace the exhibit.
Replace the current exhibit with the new, provided exhibit.
Yeah.
And again, all the numbers were okay in the total, but there was just a missing number in there. It was just $1.1 million, so I thought it'd be important to plug it in.
Plug it in.
Mr. Mayor, I move to replace the original exhibit with the new ones provided this evening.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend resolution 23-47. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve the amended resolution.
Motion to approve the amended resolution 23-47.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended resolution 23-47. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution 23-48.
Resolution 23-48, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Beaver Creek Township for the maintenance and construction of a portion of Golden Leaf Drive.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council. This is, as council may remember, back in 2022, Amberwood Development was approved. The specific site plan was approved, and you can see from this map, a portion of Golden Leaf Drive actually falls within the township, and that little area highlighted in yellow shows the area that's in the township. Just from a practical matter, for the developer to proceed and get the lots created, one of the signature lines on the, on the subdivision of the record plan is for the township to sign off on that, because a very small portion is in their jurisdiction. In order to move forward, you know, because we require, when we were at the specific site plan stage, we required the multifamily portion, which is in, up in the orange buildings, to be connected with the single-family portion that's in the yellow. Originally, they weren't gonna connect the two, and we required that connection by roadway that, the very small portion of that road that falls in the township that the city maintain. It's less than, it's about .12 acres, so it's 5,000 square feet, only a couple hundred, 100 feet or so of road frontage. We've got a draft maintenance agreement with the township in the packet for review, and it's staff recommendation that we proceed with that, and that council authorized the city manager to sign that maintenance agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I have one. Would it have been easier, or probably may, in my mind, it's probably be more difficult to try to just annex that little piece?
That is something that we looked at and still will look at, but from a timeframe standpoint, it takes a long time to, not a long, it takes six months to, or so, to annex because of requirements.
That's the logic.
They're still intending to annex, but this is to get the process moving.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you have a timeframe on the infrastructure out there? Because they've been moving dirt.
Yeah, they, their intent is to start, they wanna sign and create the lots in December, start permitting homes in December, so they're gonna be moving, or at least beginning to sell homes and begin to put in the infrastructure. They just need all the easements in place from the county in order to start putting in the water and sewer lines and the roadways and stuff like that. So this is the first step, but they have stated their intent is to start really selling and advertising lots in December. So I imagine the first home wouldn't go up until the spring.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 23-48.
The motion and a second to approve resolution 23-48. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, council time. Councilmember Kern, would you like to kick it off?
Thank you, Your Honor. It was really a great honor this morning to be a part of the group down at the 9/11 memorial, hearing the stirring comments that were presented, and as Councilmember Schwartz said, it was a very moving, moving event, and very, very, something that I'm glad to see our community have each year. Also wanna thank the Popcorn Festival Committee for two fantastic days, and we met a lot of people, as has been mentioned by council members, who had concerns and questions, and it was very, very, very interesting, very interesting time. Also, I'd like to mention that there's a garage sale coming up at the Senior Citizen Center this Saturday, starts about 9:00 in the morning, and people who wanna have a table, they'll give you, if you wanna acquire it, purchase it, you can have a table, two tables, one space for a table, and it's another location here for, for your goods and materials that you have there. So would encourage individuals who are interested in coming down. Also have employee anniversaries, Your Honor, for September.
Aye.
Be my pleasure to read them. Jackie Dell, Parks, Recreation and Culture, 24 years of service. Bill Cussera, Finance, 16 years of service. Carlo Countryman, Police, 5 years of service. Chuck Worley, Police, 1 year. Jason Millet, Police, 2 years. Nick Smith with Engineering, 13. Ryan McLeany, Engineering, 4, excuse me, 3. Yolanda Weber with Police, 12 years. And Bethany Marissett with Police, 1 year. Again, a special congratulations to all these people who are part of the Beaver Creek family and wish them well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, just want to thank the Beaver Creek Police Department, Beaver Creek Township Fire for the ceremony this morning. It was just, it was just very moving, very touching, especially having the structure of the 9/11, or the 9/11 structure down at the park. And so I agree with Councilmember Kern. It's a great tradition that our community hosts. I also had an excellent time at the Popcorn Festival. I would also like to thank the committee for ordering such wonderful weather and orchestrating such wonderful weather. We, I worked the booth with Councilmember Kern. Were you there? Yeah. And Zach White.
Yeah. Well, the next day, we fanned out.
Yeah.
And were able to get in contact with a lot of people.
Yes. And then Sunday, we, my family and I went and enjoyed some popcorn after we did a hike at Spring House Park. And so I would encourage many of the, the community to go out and explore the park. It was an excellent hike. The weather is now cooling down, and so it makes it even better. So go out and see what a great feature we have in our community now. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, sir. I echo both comments. Popcorn Festival was great. 9/11 ceremony was always touch, is always touching. It was extremely touching this morning. I thought some of those words were, they hit, hit close to home and just made, made a lot of sense, and the pastor who spoke was fantastic. Speaking of the Popcorn Festival, the city booth was fantastically decorated, and so I want to thank the city staff for kind of redoing that this year. And it was awesome, and I would encourage you to reuse that Spring House Park banner somewhere else, because it has, you know, great information on it, fantastic picture, and I thought it was just a really nice addition. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Councilmember Schwartz for her excellent words at the moment of silence earlier today on 9/11. 2,977 people brutally killed on that day, and may we always remember 22 years later and into the future. I'd like to thank Mayor Stone and trustee Kretz and many others that helped put together and lead the 9/11 commemoration this morning. It was really wonderfully done, always somber. And I wanna thank my pastor, Jason Wing, for his really excellent words. He's from University Baptist Church, and I think just excellent way of thinking through the evils of that day and for us to consider our own choices in life. Want to thank the community for, it just seems like the Popcorn Festival gets more and more popular. I mean, it's amazing to have that kind of turnout, and I had a wonderful time with Councilmember Kern. That's the fan comment, so we handed out a lot of fans and had a great time interacting with everyone. But also to thank Mr. Burkett, that was, spent some time with us, fielding a lot of really great questions, and I think there was only one that stumped us, so we were getting there. But then finally, I want to send my condolences to John Ankeny Jr.'s family. I didn't know him too well, but in the occasions we interacted, as a major soccer fan myself, he did a lot for youth sports and participation in Beaver Creek and really the growth of the game, and really activities for young people, really excellent in terms of what he provided to our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Stone, I'd visited the Hope Hotel, their grand opening, reopening, I guess, after they'd done their renovation. It's really nice out there, if you ever get a chance to go out there and take a look at that. We also met with the new Willerforce University President. That was interesting to talk with him. He has some really big plans for Willerforce. I know they're gonna be building a new dorm, and I think he said he's, they're working on a golf course. They wanna double their enrollment while he's there, so that's, that's good. Then Mayor Stone and Councilmember Kern and I attended the ribbon cutting of the new Whitewater Express Car Wash. Got our cars washed for free. That was great. It was, they've got a lot of amenities for your car up there, so. I was able to attend a party on Kemp, which is sponsored by Ailey Church at Shaw School, and had several food trucks, bouncy houses, had a great band, and the Girl Scouts were face painting, and I actually sat down and had two young ladies paint my face, and it was so warm that it just, it changed very, very quickly. They did a great job, but it didn't last but five minutes.
Do you have photos?
Yes. I was able to go to Clean Eats with the Chamber of Commerce for lunch local. That's something that the Chamber does every, every month. They go to a local restaurant and do a lunch local to kinda help support those members. And actually, Clean Eats is one of those places I was able to go to their one-year anniversary, and they have some pretty good food there. It's not your normal food. It's, it's healthy stuff, so it's, it's pretty good. Vice Mayor Garcia and I had the opportunity to go downtown. Vice Mayor Garcia and I had the opportunity to go downtown to the Dayton Dragons Ballpark and listen and have lunch with Dave Lappam, who's a former Bengals player and the Bengals announcer. What he did was, he did a film study of the Bengals. And I remember when I played football, it was, it was kind of nice to be able to sit there and watch that film study and not get called out for something I did wrong. Because usually in those films, I got called out a lot. I also spent the weekend at the popcorn festival, spoke to a lot of people. It was, it was a really interesting time. And I do want to thank the committee for ordering the good weather. Because I don't recall a popcorn festival that's had that kind of weather for quite some time. Saturday was beautiful. A lot's been said about this morning's 9/11 ceremony. I want to thank Officer Brownlee for heading that up and putting that all together in the fire department. It was very moving. And Councilman Schwartz, your friend from the Air Force, really summed it up well. It's, you know, it's, and then the flyover that happened. Three of those pilots in that flyover I work with at the Wright B. Flyer. So I know those guys pretty well. They love to do that. And then this morning, also, we were able to the swearing in of our newest police officer, Officer Megan Kai, Clyde. We want to welcome her to Beaver Creek and to police family. And I look forward to watching her succeed and grow with her new position. So that's all I have.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. Well, I won't repeat everyone else's things. I just have a couple more updates. Again, with 9/11 today, my son was incredibly excited to come home and show me all the flags they had out by the school, the yellow ribbons. He was very excited to tell me all about it. So I think it's fantastic that we still remember it and we're teaching the younger generations its importance. MVRPC, just a couple updates. We met last week, this week, and next week are the Ohio Commuter Challenge. So MVRPC's ride share program is partnering with Go Ohio Commute, and they are trying to encourage people to log their sustainable commute trips. That's going to include carpooling, as opposed to driving by yourself, biking, walking, taking the bus. You can register at drivelesslivmore.com, I'm sorry, dot org, drivelesslivmore.org. And the dashboard they have is actually really neat. It not only shows you how much money you save, but if you're walking or biking, it'll show you an estimated calorie burn, how far you've gone. It's a really neat feature. You can log up to two trips a day, so two somewhere and then back from that same location. And each trip is an entry to win a prize. So again, that's September 11th, so today through September 24th, drivelesslivmore.org if you're looking for some prizes. The Miami Curtains Servency District also presented, excuse me, we talked about some changes in the water cycle and its effect on landscape in the Miami Valley. What I thought was really important and practical for Beaver Creek, especially as we talked about, that in urban areas, sometimes low-lying areas that rely on stormwater damage systems, that because of the changes in the water life cycle and not because of the Miami River flooding, these areas are going to be more prone to water damage and flooding. And it has nothing, again, it has nothing to do with the great Miami River flooding, but the stormwater drainage systems can't keep up. So as we take a look at some of our areas where we talk about stormwater damage and retention, it was just something interesting that kind of struck a chord with me when we talk about the water life cycles intensifying. So something to keep an eye on as we continue down that road. I know it's something we've talked about for years, but just keeping an eye on that and its continued importance. And then the one last thing I want to mention, I know last month I talked about the adult changing tables and some of the areas that they're going to bring in. We didn't have a presentation on it yet, but when I was using the restroom down at where we were meeting, I noticed they have one now at the Dayton Metro Library. And they are very nifty type, I mean, adult changing tables. I'll be interested to hear the presentation on that. And again, with so many great parks that we have in our community, it's something to kind of look into once we know more. But that was about it for me.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to start off by just saying thank you to John Ankeny. He touched the lives of so many of our youth on those soccer fields. I can remember sitting here back in the late 90s or early 2000s, and John was here asking for a tractor. They were, they raised all their own money up until that point, and they still continued mostly to raise their own money. But that was, he needed a tractor. He had those brand-new fields, and it was going to take a lot. He had to have a million miles sitting and riding that tractor, and I bet it's still down there today somewhere. But John, thank you, and the community thanks you as well. City booth was the, had the best display of our projects that I've ever seen. So thanks to staff on that one. It made all our questions a whole lot easier when we can just go, let's go figure this out ourselves. But it, but I thank the staff for that. I had the privilege of hosting, along with Kettering and Dayton, the Ohio Mayors Alliance regional meetings. We did that down at, down in Dayton. And we had, I guess, about a dozen local mayors from the alliance, so this is still the top 30 largest cities. And I think we had 15 legislators. So it was an area, it was a meeting where, that we're trying to do district meetings more than just the main meeting in Columbus, so that you get more one-on-one type discussions. So that was good. Also then met with Congressman Turner, along with the other regional mayors for, down at the Engineers Club. And Congressman Turner does this, other than COVID, has done this about every year. And this is just a roundtable discussions. What are we looking at? He gets, he talked about PDAC process. He talked about a lot of the other things that he has on his mind. But number one is Wright-Patt. And that's his, that's his baby over there. And so he's, he made sure we knew what was going on with Wright-Patt. He was very, he's the one that actually initiated the COG, which is the group of council of governments that are trying to be proactive in how land is zoned and developed around the base. And so that was a good meeting. Labor Day since our last meeting. I hope everybody had a great time on Labor Day. And this morning was a good morning. It was, I want to thank the police and fire departments. This is something that we turned over to them many years ago to say, this is your role now, please. We, and they have grabbed it and run with it. And it's very impressive, and I think it's one of the most elaborate in the region. And so I want to thank the police and fire for their efforts on that. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the 9/11 ceremony. Great jobs by the police and fire unions that have taken the task on. We initially challenged them with it, the years of doing about five, 10-minute simple service just to acknowledge the time and every five-year anniversary than having a bigger ceremony. And this morning really blew us away because it was like it was a five-year ceremony-type of flyover and everything included. It was very touching. I will say that, for those that have children, if you never want them to forget, or you want to use it as a teaching tool, the 9/11 ceremony there on North Fairfield Road, you can walk them up. They have the boards there that has timelines, it has the Twin Tower, a concrete structure with a plane, the piece of iron there hanging. It is a very easy, teachable moment. Kids learn by seeing and by touching, so to speak. And I think it's something that definitely to teach children about, and it's a good tool right in front of us, right in our own city. So please take the opportunity to see the 9/11 ceremony memorial. I did want to thank more than staff. I do thank all the staff members for volunteering and council members, too, for, you know, hosting in the tent. But I did want to, specifically Katie Carrigo, our communications manager, had the idea over a year ago. Actually, it was before the last one, but we just ran out of time to do these banners with the pictures on it that would do that. And so we're like, okay, well, we ran out of time this year, but you got to make it happen next year. And she did, and it looked great. So thank you, Katie, for hard, hard work on putting those designs up. That did make it easy to view and answer questions and so forth. So thank you, Katie. Job well done. Job well done for Randy and Jeff, everybody putting the graphics together for her as well. So much appreciated. The only other thing I'll have before I actually announce, a couple things, is Citizens Academy that we've had this Thursday will be week four of six this week. Randy's in the hot seat with planning, development, and zoning and code enforcement. We've had 29 and 30 students every single week. This is people who have pre-signed up, and they've been in each class. And they, they are asking great questions. They are engaging. They are having fun. We've tried to make it a little fun for them, and I think they've enjoyed it. They've all came back, so either they're having fun or they like cruel and unusual punishment. So one of the two. So we've enjoyed them, and we got the last, of course, week six city council, they'll be here, and we'll have a graduation ceremony for them. So looking forward to that. Tonight, just a couple of things to update, the Grange Hall road widening. This began in August along the west side of the existing roadway for the installation of temporary roadway. So you got to move them over to the one side so you can work on the other side, and that's exactly what's going to be happening. And this is from Summerfield Drive to Kemp Road to widen from two to three lanes. That's going to have that middle turn lane. It'll be adding curb, sidewalk along the east and west sides of the road. And of course, this will be eventually shifting traffic over to the construction, to complete the construction on the east side of the roadway for the project. And the project will be ongoing throughout the rest of 2023 and in current, currently scheduled to become complete by September 2024. So unfortunately, these road widening, just like Dayton-Zenia, remember the two times we had to, well, more than two times, but Dayton-Zenia, when we're working on that. Unfortunately, the barrels are going to sit, we'll make it as smooth as possible, but the barrels will stand during the snow season. And they're huge projects, and they take two summer seasons to get scheduled and to get underway. But the product will be very nice by this time next year. So looking forward to much improved and safe roadway. And that's the purpose of this road widening is, one of the biggest things on the grants is, it's an improvement to safety and pedestrian safety as well as motor vehicles. We've had many head-on collisions through that stretch. But if you have any questions on this, please feel free to contact Engineering Division at the 427-5513. And Shakertown Road update, this one is going to hurt a little bit. Unfortunately, Friday, September 8th, this past Friday, there's a temporary traffic signal was placed along Shakertown Road near Carthage Drive. This temporary traffic signal will limit the traffic on Shakertown Road to one direction at a time in order to provide room necessary for the contractor to complete the road widening work along the roadway. So due to this temporary, Carthage Drive will be closed at Shakertown Road intersection. This work is going to take about 60 days. I know engineering will push it, push them as hard as it can to get it sooner if we can. Emergency access will be possible while this work is in progress. Again, if you have any concern or questions, please contact our Engineering Division at This already mentioned by Councilmember Kern, mark your calendar for Friday, September 15th, 9:00 a.m. to noon, the Senior Center Annual Garage Sale. So it's going to be in the outdoor garage sale. Hopefully, we have good weather. Dial it up, Councilmember Kern. It'll be held in the center's overflow parking lot. So that's on the backside of the senior center. And should be a lot of goodies come and support the senior center. And I mentioned this last week, and again, this is a great time, it's coming up here real soon. The fishing derby, which we, COVID caused us to be out-of-the-box thinking, and we did it, and now we like it so much, we're keeping with the same way. So Fishing Derby is no longer one day. Fishing Derby is, is a timeframe, a week. So September 19th through 26th, we'll stock the pond, you bring the rod and bait, send your picture of the child and the fish that they caught by September 27th to parks@beavercreecohio.gov. And entries must include child's name, age, parent's name, address, phone number, date you went fishing at the park. And participating families will be entered in drawing for prizes such as games, toys, kids, fishing gear, tickets to local attractions. Fishing at Dominic LaFino Park is catch and release only, and fishing licenses are not required for children under 16. And thank you to the Ohio Division of Natural Resources, American Legion Post 763, and the IH Credit Union for supporting this events. They're our sponsors. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on any issue whatsoever? Please come forward. And once again, please give us a name and address.
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity. I just would like to discuss a little bit about new Spring House Park. When we talk about economic development, which is a lot that we're concerned with, I get very concerned when we're going to have something that is going to be a permanent financial drain on the community. That levy is going to go on forever. And that does concern me. That's a cash flow out to the residents and nothing coming back in. So I'd like to raise that point on there. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is a little bit on the joint work session on August 21st, 2023. And what I'd like to say publicly is I hope the residents of Beaver Creek take the time to read that, because I saw some items in there that I do have some concerns. You're talking about land speculation and buying more property for whatever uses out there, looking at raising additional revenue, and also going out and setting yourself some pay raises. So again, I'd like the residents of Beaver Creek to take the time to read that, and if you have any concerns or anything else like that, this would be the right forum to bring them up. So that's all I have, and I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
We will look and try to find what it is you're talking about in the minutes, but I don't, I don't personally recall those items. But we appreciate you bringing it to our attention if they're in there. Because I don't, we certainly did not discuss pay raises that I'm aware of.
I would be happy to print out to Dr. or something.
I think we have the minutes here. Anyway, thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, Mayor. I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the appointment, promotion, and promotion of a public employee.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. And for the, those in attendance and those at home, there will be no action taken when we return. But if you wish to wait, we will return here to reconvene and then to dismiss. So with that, we are in executive session. Thank you.